Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Approval of the agenda, we have one addition under unfinished business, eight D parking on First Street. We need to discuss that, so when we get to that point, is there any other changes? Counsel have anything? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that addition?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Joe.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the February 5th, 2025 regular meeting. All receive them in your packet. Is there any changes or clarification needed within those minutes?
Uh, one change, uh, the consent agenda portion, item D, uh, they have the abstain for Mayor Stone, that was actually I abstained on that one.
Yep, Vicky and I noted that one before the meeting, so that will be changed.
Okay.
All right, that's fine, no, thank you, means you're reading your minutes. Any other changes? Do I have a motion to approve the February 5th, 2025 regular meeting with that change?
So move.
Motion by Scott, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. This now brings us to our public open forum, is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Call it third time, is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Our public open forum is closed, we have no public hearings, we'll move on to reports and presentations, Police Department Monthly Report.
Joe. Good evening, everyone, uh, monthly report for January, uh, 2025, uh, the total was 770, uh, ICRs. Now some of the highlights of them, uh, we had six total crashes, property damage crashes, uh, which is full normal for January with icy roads and people banging into it. Those six are ones that happened on the roadway, there were a handful of private, like Walmart, Colburn's parking lot ones we respond to. We don't report those as state accident reports, we're more like matter of information, collecting property damage information for them. Three people were arrested for disorderly conduct throughout the month. When you see the mark reports, those are, those are reports that come from the state regarding, uh, vulnerable adult reports, um, we work in conjunction with Stern Scott Human Services and conduct those investigations with them, so you'll see we had five of those. Responded, uh, medical emergency, uh, and lift assists, we tried to combine those, 26 of those. Ordinance violations, those are going to be the parking tickets that we wrote. One sexual assault, one school bus stop arm violation, those are up for the previous month, uh, five thefts, uh, all those thefts were retail store ones I looked before. Eight welfare checks, um, a couple stalled vehicles, some of those due to the cold, that we assisted with, standing by till the truck came. Uh, so if you look at the numbers, I mean, 770 is kind of on par where we've been the last couple of years, and that, in that time, in that average range there. Of the, uh, ticket, or the, or the traffic stops, let's say 327, 60 of those about, it's not in your list, but I figured a way out how to break that down, 60 of those were citations. So, not a lot of citations for the moment, context, a lot of warnings out there, giving people more education than they else. Parking, has been pretty good as far as the winter parking rules go, um, maybe one or two a night maybe. The snow we got a couple of weeks ago, the guys were out, when Ben had the falls coming out, uh, the guys ended up knocking on, I think, three doors that one night and got them, so we didn't have to tow them, or knocking on the doors at two in the morning to prevent people having to pay a big tow bill. So that's been pretty good. Other than that, in January, uh, we spent a lot of time in January, February, doing a lot of our online mentor training, we try to get those on the way, when it's, especially like the last week here it's been cold, we try to crack out our online training, get some of that stuff, uh, the in-house stuff done. Also in January, we did have, we got a, with our new RMS program system, we, eventually we're going to go to a digital evidence, uh, log, where our evidence, right now we write everything in evidence tags and go in our evidence room. Uh, we got with this new program, no cost to us, basically a digital scanner style, so when we get a piece of evidence, it'll be digitally, it'll get a barcode, digitally scanned, it'll be put away from paper, and we're getting, we'll be on the computer. We're a couple of months out from it actually working, because they gave us the software, but there's no one to train us on it yet, so we're waiting for that to happen. Any questions on any of that?
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Public Works Monthly Report, Ben.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, this past month, outdoor rink, the building and ice have been maintained and available for use each day, with the warm weather coming up next week, that's likely going to melt through the ice pretty quickly, so we're probably looking at, uh, the end of the season, towards the end of next week, next weekend. We did have to put a new water pump on the ZAM at the outdoor rink, so that's done and working again. The arena, we have the last scheduled event coming up on March 1st, uh, this weekend we have one more tournament, and then after that we will start to remove the ice that following week and get the compressor shut down and get it turned over for dry floor events. We had several snow events to clean up from this past month, we also had the trucks out just routinely, uh, putting sand down on the icy spots throughout town and then plowing back drifts as they came across in our normal problem spots. The tool cat, we had a CV shaft that needed to be removed and repaired, so we got that done, no other major equipment issues to work, uh, to work on, everything else is working as expected. We did have one warm week that caused some melting water backup in a few of our storm sewer pipes, so those pipes were thawed, got the water flowing again, and then we also serviced our jetter, so that it's ready to, uh, to go, likely next week we'll be using that heavy again as the snow starts to melt. Senior Center, we did have a sewer backup in the building over a weekend, there was something plugged in the line, not sure what that was, but we did get the blockage cleared and the sewer's been working just fine ever since then. Fish cleaning station is seen frequent use throughout the winter here, we maintain that on a weekly basis, we did some prep work for the snowmobile races to help out with that. And then lastly, just one of the other things we kind of work on is looking at preventing unnecessary injuries, we, uh, fabbed up a manhole removal tool, bought a big magnet, it was about a hundred bucks, fabbed the tool up ourselves to utilize it, they're about fifteen hundred bucks if you buy them, so that's, that's been good so far, we'll be using that when the storm sewer stuff starts coming up here, but, any questions I can answer?
Questions? Okay, I guess. Thank you. Ambulance Department, fourth quarter and annual report, Kathy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm here for the fourth quarter report and then the year-end report for 2024. So, fourth quarter report for October, we had 20 no loads, eight ALS transfers, 30 BLS transfers, plus an additional, excuse me, 28 scheduled dialysis transfers. Forty-six medical calls, of which seven were ALS medicals, for a total of 132 runs and activities for the month. That compares to 83 from last year and 48 10 years ago, for that same month. Of those 132 for this year, totaled, that were billed out, 110 for $148,103. For November, we had 21 no loads, five ALS transfers, 16 BLS transfers, plus an additional 16 scheduled dialysis transfers and 45 medical calls, two of those were ALS medicals, for a total of 87 runs and activities, that compares to 75 last year and 66 10 years ago. And of the 87 for November of 2024, total billed out was 66, for a total of 80,839. For December, we had 19 no loads, five ALS transfers and 18 BLS transfers, um, 39 medical calls, seven of those were ALS, so we had 81 runs and activities, and that compares to 79 in 2023 and 56 10 years ago. But of the 83 for December of 2024, we billed out 57, for a total of 82,237, so total billed out for fourth quarter was 311,179. On your spreadsheet, there is a mathematical error, I didn't have the correct numbers for the columns for the BLS transfers and the build calls, because I had those ALS numbers added in there, so I, I took the sum, denary, you know, the sum thing, also didn't add them up, so. Should be 238 for the bottom of BLS transfers for the year, total of 238, and 795 billed calls for 2024. Thirty-three of those, 190, or 795 were ALS calls. So we're utilizing our ALS license, our medics, they're able to, um, do most of our ALS transfers, and then if they're not on call but available and something serious comes in, they respond to, um, make, see if it can be ALS, if they can utilize their services and help somebody out with some pain meds or something, if it's something requiring that. Um, your canceled no loads, you can see the totals I have numbered, totaled up there, and as usual, crash, vehicle crashes, um, is one of the highest no loads that we have, followed by the falls and lift assists, where we go and help somebody up and they're not injured. Special details, public relations for the fourth quarter, we did school CPR in the high school for the fall semester, we did a career day at the Sock Center High School, we did an overview of the EMT jobs, how to get licensed to become an EMT, and did equipment demonstrations. Holy Family School, we did the wellness enrichment class for the fifth and sixth graders, where we show them basic CPR, first aid, choking, Narcan, and defibrillator, some of our equipment demonstrations, trying to get in the schools a little bit more to let, uh, kids know what the EMT life's all about and try to get them interested in EMS. Mutual aid for the fourth quarter. For Melrose, we did four ALS transfers to St. Cloud, one ALS transfer to Abbott Northwest, one medical, mutual aid that we took to Melrose Hospital, did one fire standby for them, we assisted on one crash where we took a patient to Melrose Hospital and one medical where we were canceled. We did mutual aid for North Memorial, two medicals taken to Alec Hospital, and one medical canceled. For Central Care EMS, we did, uh, mutual aid transfers from St. Cloud to Prairie St. John's, Long Prairie to Wilmer, and then two canceled transfers, one Long Prairie to Wilmer and one Wilmer to Prairie St. John's. And then for Long Prairie Ambulance, we had one medical where we were canceled before we got there. ALS transfers that we had to give up due to unavailability, we had 11 of them for the fourth quarter, like I said, we, uh, we always check with Melrose to see if Melrose has a medic available, if we're not, and they do the same, so we kind of try to work back and forth with Melrose, both of us being part-time ALS, to help each other out with that. So that's the end of the fourth quarter, for the overview for the year 2024, I've got the graph for the age bracket, you can see, um, the biggest percentage of our patients were between the ages of 60 to 69, was almost 20% of our patients, and then 70 to 79 and 80 to 89 were both 14.87%, so that's the next highest group that we are out there helping out. Day of the week, the busiest day of the week was Thursday, had over 17% of our calls on Thursdays, followed by Tuesdays, and goes down from there, Sunday is generally the quietest day of the week. Time of day, seven in the morning to eight in the morning is the highest peak there, you can see that was quite a few percentage there, pretty high on the graph, and then, um, 12 noon till one o'clock in the afternoon is the second highest. So anywhere between 11:00 in the morning and seven at night is where the majority of our calls come in, in that, that timeframe. And then I have the townships that we serve, and even some of these are the mutual aid calls we went on, so, um, Sock Center Township is the biggest township that we, uh, respond to. And Birchdale, Kendota, and West Union Townships are pretty high on the graph, as well as Giddy Township, Ashley Township, I've got them color-coded, so you can see what county that they're in, the, the maroon ones are Todd County. Blue ones are Pope County, we just serve a small portion of Pope County, so we don't go there very often. Then I've got all the other towns listed too, Little Sock, city of El Rosa, how often we go there, West Union, Osakis, Westport, and Greenwald. So that's where we're going, what we're doing, a lot of transfers, so we're still putting on a lot of miles on our rigs. Trying to stay warm in these cold snaps. Any questions for me on the quarterly or the year-end?
Just one question, yeah, I'm sorry, just one quick question, that's not a misprint though really, for the patient age range and years, it's exactly the same in all the runs, if you're 70 to 79 or 80 to 89?
Okay, what was that again, the age?
Yeah, age bracket.
Yeah, they're, they're, they both say you've had 156 runs for both age brackets.
Yeah, it came out to the same percent, so yeah, must have been, I think it was what, 14.87?
Wow, that just catches me, quite unique, all right.
Yeah, just pretty coincidental, I guess.
Yeah, it is, over the course of a year.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathy.
Right, thank you.
Ambulance Department, annual billing collection.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, for the 2024 billing and collection, uh, report, uh, we had our most challenging year ever, uh, since we had to switch billing companies. Uh, this report's going to show that I had to estimate a lot, because our old billing company, um, I just received the October report, so I'm still waiting for November and December, so I apologize for that. Um, we, uh, we billed out 740, uh, uh, medical calls, totaling, uh, 1,22,377 dollars and 80 cents, uh, worth of, uh, ambulance billing, we collected approximately 504,225 dollars and 80 cents, and I did break down where those monies, uh, came from, which billing company, and then also the other revenue sources. Uh, we still approximately have 705,253, uh, dollars and 22 cents worth of outstanding billing, um, and I show, uh, the breakdown where those are located on, on the two billing companies. Do have to note that a lot of times it takes up to a year to, uh, finalize the payments on these, that's, uh, why that number's quite a bit high. Uh, I am going to be asking the council to adjust 320,692 dollars and 91 cents, uh, these are, uh, medic, or, uh, insurance adjustments usually from Medicare Medicaid, they're federally and state mandated adjustments, um, and that's my report, any questions I can help you with?
Yeah, being new on, who is, so who's the new billing and who was the old billing?
Okay, uh, expert billing was our old billing.
Okay.
Uh, and we hired in June, EMS MC, they're out of Winston-Salem, North Carolina.
Thank you.
How quick is the turnaround from, from a call to the patient receiving a bill?
Usually, uh, about two weeks. It usually goes through to insurance companies.
Sure.
So the patient might not know that for actually a couple of months.
Is EMS the same billing that our neighboring, uh, ambulance departments use?
Yeah, um, Melrose uses them, and they, they recommended, uh, them to us when we were looking for billing companies, and there's a bunch of, uh, Minnesota companies or ambulance services that left expert billing to go to EMS MC.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any other questions, concerns?
Okay, thank you.
Fire Department Annual, Annual Report, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, this is for the 2024 Annual Report, um, so response calls, uh, we had six structured fires compared to six in 2023, uh, we had nine grass fires, same as in 2023, uh, we had 41 rescue and medical calls, and we had 42 in 2023. Vehicle accidents and fires, uh, we had 23, and 2023 was also 23, uh, gas, smoke, and alarm calls was 21, and 2023 was 16, uh, the false cancel calls was 47, and 2023 was 40. Service calls was 15, and, and 2023 was, uh, 12. And the response calls billed was 21,585 dollars, uh, from 2023, we received some 1,437 dollars, and then for 2024, we received 16,115 dollars. Unpaid so far is 2,460 dollars, and then, uh, some write-offs, collections was 3,840 dollars. We have grants reimbursed, donations from Sock Center Fire Relief, $40,000 donation, Terry Brooks of 200, Minnesota National Bank of 440, Minnesota National Agency of 100, the Mines of $100. Upper Side Landscape, uh, there was a donation, but they, I actually request a payment now, so we will be paying them, so. Center Auto Incorporated, uh, they, they work on the real, um, they donate $300, some of that labor, uh, towards that. Joseph and Elizabeth Niehaus with $75, West Union, uh, Cabinet Charities, Orkheim Charities is $50, and Community Connections is $500, so a total of, total, uh, donations was 42,133 dollars. We had, uh, 2024, we had three firefighters retired, um, and we also hired three firefighters in 2024, and for 2025, we have four retirees, uh, one is salary retired in February, and then we have three more in, uh, March here, and then we have three already to, that is going through, uh, firefighter one and two in hazmat right now, and so they will be coming out in March here. Any questions?
You have one you're going to have to advertise for?
Nah, we were, we're going to wait till probably next January, and we do have another retiree that's probably going to go in January 2025, so we'd like to hire two at a time, so we'll probably wait for that open petition to fill back.
2026, right?
Or 26, yeah, sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
The last time we went out for advertising, we ended up with like, what, 10, 11 applications?
That's great.
It was very good, and there are a lot of towns are struggling, so.
Right. So. Okay, any questions or concerns? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
CVB Annual Report, Pam.
Good evening, um, I gave you, um, my report, so I'm just going to highlight some, uh, things on the report, and then, um, if you have questions, I will certainly answer them. In 2024, uh, some of the big things that happened was, uh, Snow Fest was canceled due to unfavorable ice conditions, um, uh, we had two large golf tournaments where we supplied welcome bags for the participants, and the welcome bags usually have some kind of swag, uh, for Sock Center, it has a visitor's guide, it has, uh, possibly a keychain or a pencil and notepad, something like that to, with advertising on it for Sock Center. So people, um, take that home and hopefully remember us. We had Stern's, uh, corn growers, uh, for golf tournament, well, that was 350 packets, and then, uh, the Minnesota milk producers, that was 60, um, we put together 350 welcome packets for, uh, the Eagles Healing Nest. We reconstructed our website and social media, we, um, received $5,000 from Explore Minnesota for a grant, um, I updated, uh, meeting brochure, which I gave as many copies as I had out, and, um, we had two small meetings that, uh, I scheduled for Magnify Financial. Unfortunately, I had to turn one down for 350 people, because I didn't have any facilities for that. We had, uh, two bus tours that came in and, uh, visited the Boyhood Home and the History Museum, supplied 90 welcome packets to those. Uh, we are members of the Chamber of Commerce, Sinclair Lewis Foundation, History Museum, and Conservation Club, and, uh, let's see. I attended the, uh, Minnesota Tourism Conference from Explore Minnesota Tourism, and I attached the notes from that to, to your packet. As you can see, I put in numbers for, um, how many visitor guides we sent out, which was, uh, I think 67, or 6,600 visitor guides that went out to visitor centers, uh, from Leeds, from, uh, Explore Minnesota Tourism, Canada, um, meetings and tour groups. Our attendance on Facebook was up to 101% from the year before. Next year, um, I'd like to work on, uh, working with the EDA to research and, and contact some hotel chains for possible new hotels, we're really short on hotel rooms, and, um, are talking to our hotel owners and operators right now, um, they've had to turn people away, especially during tournament time, and anywhere from Alexandria to, uh, Monticello, uh, hotels are filled, and people certainly don't want to travel that far to come to a tournament, so we're really short on, on facility. We were down to six board members, and, uh, we just, um, uh, got, uh, news today that, that Allison from Babbitts would like to join the board, and she's putting in a, um, application, and several other people we've contacted, so we'll know more about that later. And hopefully we'll just continue to advertise and market Sock Center for a destination and a welcoming place to move to. Any questions?
Questions?
I don't have no questions, but I have comments, um, first of all, thank you Pam, I think it's a great report, and I guess as the, uh, council lay us on with the CVB, um, we had a meeting today, correct? I have been unfortunate to just not be able to be there because of my schedule, so, um, but I want to ask the council, is this what you're looking for, or is there more information you'd like to see? To me, there's a lot of data here, there's 2025 goals, there's examples of what type of advertising that's been done, and, um, feedback is really important if there's something additional or more that you want. I guess my question to you guys, how do you feel about this?
I think it looks good, I, I, I think we were missing, missing the goals from previous years, to, to know where, was the CVB successful, or was Visit Sock Center successful in their accomplishments throughout the year, have you, did you meet your goals? I mean, it looks like you have a great, you've put yourself in a great position for '25.
Yeah, I mean, I like the, like the report here, um, certainly for me, I like to read the stuff in advance, so, you know, instead of getting it at the meeting, uh, it'd be nice to have this maybe a couple of days, like when, when you sent the financials, it'd be nice to have the full report, so I could read that in advance, but, um, you know, the report here is good, and I know I had an opportunity to talk to Pam today, I reached out to her on some questions I had from the financial side of things to get a little more explanation, so, um, I mean, my questions were answered, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm, I'm happy with how this turned out, because basically it shows transparency, you know, before, there was a lot of questions about a lot of stuff that was going on that we didn't know about, and this way it brings us up to speed. I know originally, there was a lot of, when the CVB- Um, I know originally there was a lot of, when the CVB was first put together, it was, we're gonna coordinate bus tours and we're gonna have conventions and everything. I take it you're still doing that, trying to get them here.
Well, we, we, we advertise in those venues, but we don't have space for conventions. We don't have hotel rooms, we don't have meeting spaces.
Right.
Uh, we talked about that today at the, at the board meeting and, um, one of the board members is gonna talk to, uh, the Eagles Nest to see whether or not they are willing to use their auditorium because they have side rooms that you could break off into short groups, that type of thing. But we really don't have anything for, for, uh, a three hundred and fifty person convention, but we don't also have hotel rooms for that.
Right.
Um, one thing I'd like to know is, uh, and this, this has been talked about in our meetings too is, um, I would like to know when I get the report from the city, um, to break down the hotel, um, lodging tax so that I know what hotels are involved in paying the lodging tax. Um, I've, I've had some conversations with several of the lodging facilities, um, and I know that, uh, advertising has not been on their venue very much. Then my question is, is how much work do I put in advertising for them? Uh, I had a facility that wouldn't advertise in the Herald. Uh, and when asked why, it said they didn't care. And I'm thinking, I'm putting their logo and their information and QR codes for people to come there. How much work am I putting into that? When in fact, I'm not, they, they won't join the board. Um, um, and I've called them several times and asked for information and it's just not forthcoming in, in any of that. So my question is, is I would like to know for the next year, where, where is most of the lodging tax coming from? What facilities pay the lodging, most of the lodging tax?
Would Jacqueline be able to do that? Would she be able to separate out and, and kind of line by line?
It's a matter of public information. But if we give them lodging tax as a chunk of money that we collect and according to what we'd be able to find out is, it doesn't matter who pays it, it's supposed to be the community as a whole, not based on who's paying it. So if I can find a loophole that says it's, it's public information as to who individually pays how much, then I gladly give it all. But we haven't been able to find where that is public.
And that's not necessarily gonna change what I do, but, you know, when I ask these people for information and, um, guidance in advertising for them, it's nice to know whether or not they are supporting what we're doing. You know, I think that's really important.
It, it seems, and I think we, uh, from your board level, it's probably conversations there. I mean, Vicky's got a good point in reference to, you know, what's public and what's not, that is a very critical part of the, you know, of the, of our process internally. Um, but I do also think that the lodging tax is, is part of any of our hotels and motels have to pay a lodging tax. So, um, I guess I look at it this day as, if you're staying in a hotel in Sock Center, you're paying lodging tax and you're getting your portion of it. I think maybe what you're trying to ask Pam is, the great question is, is, am I getting eighty percent from this place and ten percent from here and, you know, I mean, where is it coming from? You almost could see that just based on where the majority of the people are staying, probably. I don't, I mean, that's still not exact numbers for you, but, um, I do think there will be some confidentiality issues that we have to probably work through to, to get you that information, but we can work on it.
I understand where she's coming from. But like Vicky said, it's, it all gets thrown in one pot. And it shouldn't make any difference if you are the American and full every week or if you're a VRVO that's paying in and you only do it seven times a year. I don't want us, I want it as a whole group on the advertising as a whole, not, well, you only paid this much, so I'm only gonna do one ad a year for you because you don't pay the percentage the American does. And to me, I think that's the reason why it's the way it is, statutes, making sure that it is one lump sum going in for you to work with and not this based on who you are and what you are, so.
Could be, I don't have the answer to that, but I think it, you know, it's a, it's a fair question, all we can do is try to get a answer for Pam if we can or cannot do that.
Yeah, and I think Vicky didn't kinda see it as of right now, we can't, so.
Yeah, I think the goal is you market, market the community and, you know, you do your best effort, if they don't wanna give you the information for their hotel, just say, well, it's available and I can, you know, if they're not willing to come to the table for you, here's your name, here's your website. Consumer, you decide if you wanna go to it there.
They don't have anything to argue about if they don't give you the information.
Right.
You know, that, that's the way it's been in sales forever.
Yeah.
So.
It's great, it's, I guess, fantastic report, thank you. Um, I'm looking forward to finally getting to a meeting here soon, but, um, I think the, the council, just as long as we give you kind of what we're asking for and you bring the things like you're bringing tonight, I, I just think that goes a long way, so thank you.
Okay. Anything else, counsel?
Okay, thank you, Pam.
We'll move on to planning commission report. Sarah?
Good evening, um, in your packet, you have a copy of our, um, last meeting agenda from February eleventh. And I also wanna follow up with the nuisance complaints. Um, in November of two thousand twenty-four, I had a total of forty-two, uh, nuisance complaints and twenty-eight had been resolved. Um, in December, it was the same number, forty-two, we're down to thirty-one, have been resolved. Um, I have four or five that have gone on to the city attorney. We still have another Lake Shore lot or two that we're working with. And there'll be like a half a dozen or so that'll carry over into the new year.
What the hell?
And then you also have in the packet, um, a quarterly building permit value. Um, the year-end total, we had eight point two million dollars worth of construction. And then I have underneath there the year-end for two thousand twenty-three, we had six point two million. And I also have the comparison from twenty, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. Um, you know, the range is from six point two million to eighteen point nine. You know, the permits range from a hundred thirty-two to two hundred fifty-eight per year, so we just, you know, it's a moving target every year. Um, you also have the December building permits. There's only, uh, three of those issued and there's like thirty-four thousand dollars in value of that. And then you also had the copy of the January twenty twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, um, building permit value. And the largest one is the, in that one is the one point seven five million for tractor supply. So the month of January, we're at one point eight million. Uh, the other breakdown, um, we had the December and then January building permit reports. Uh, during the month of December, three permits were issued, again, the thirty-four thousand. A year ago in December, um, the total construction value is four hundred and seventy thousand, so it just varies what projects are coming in. Uh, January twenty twenty-five, ten permits were issued, again, that one point eight million and a year ago it was, uh, one point five million. And then you did get a list of all of the zoning permits for the entire year, that was, uh, kind of the lengthy spreadsheet in here. And then we have the land use and zoning requests that happened in twenty twenty-four. Uh, we have nineteen of them and I kind of did a little breakdown of like zoning ma- zoning map amendments. There was two, city code amendments were two, um, easements or vacations were four, minor subdivisions or lots of it were four, uh, variances were seven. And the other little graph shows that from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, they vary from fourteen a year to twenty-seven a year to nine a year, twenty-three year, nineteen a year. So it's, like I said, it's constantly a moving target with the requests that come in. And we also have the dem- demographics and population. Um, the twenty twenty-four population number doesn't come out from the state demographic's office until July twenty-fifth. But we have highest housing units as of the end of twenty twenty-four of, of one thousand nine hundred seventy-two, so like ten more than last year. So it's just kinda, uh, history from twenty fifteen to current. So is there any questions about that?
Questions, concerns?
Can I keep speaking? Can I keep asking questions?
Well.
Are you okay with it?
It's the only way you're gonna learn, so.
Nice. Um, I wanna go back to your four nuisance.
Pardon me?
Your, you, you said you have four nuisance violations that you're dealing with that ever carry over in twenty twenty-five from twenty twenty-four?
Like, maybe half a dozen, four broke, four are going to the attorney.
Okay, so, um, at what level, uh, to the attorney and then what is the envision of next steps?
You mean like when it goes to attorney or the ones that are still like carryover?
Well, I'm concerned about the four that are going to the attorney. And when are we gonna find out from the attorney or from what is gonna be the timing on our next steps?
Because it's a legal matter, I, I'm not comfortable addressing that at a public meeting.
Okay, then let me ask you it this way. Are there going to be next steps?
I believe there will be.
Okay. I, as a, as a council member, would just like to see us continue to move forward and not get bogged down into attorney letters and, well, we're waiting for a response and we're waiting for a response. I'm not saying you are, I'm just saying, as a new board member to the city council, um, we can kick a can down the road for five years, but we have to really, in my opinion, set, got, set some timelines and some next steps. If we have to go to district court or we have to go somewhere, then let's go. I mean, this, this, I'm, I'm just giving you my opinion.
Yep. And that's kind of what the council's been working with because that's the reason why we increased the attorney budget for the last two years to buy fifty thousand dollars. Cause we want this, no more kicking the can down the road. Um, the numbers she gave us, yeah, they're impressive. But you, I'm talking to the assessor that's going around and the number of people that all of a sudden have an extra base, bedroom in their basement and egress windows and there's not a permit pulled for any of it. People are doing stuff left and right out there and we're not a complaint-driven city anymore. Anybody that is an employee of the city, if you see a violation, you have to report it.
Do you think that's based on the education of people and what they're aware of, what they can do and what, what they need from the city based on X, Y and Z? Like, does, does someone know if, if creating a, you know, an extra room in their basement, putting up walls, does that require a permit? And if they're not asking the questions because they just assume?
Yeah.
Well, obviously, if you're putting a bedroom in a basement and you put an egress window, you know what the guidelines are a little bit, so why is the permit following it?
It, it might be the more, and I'm, uh, totally in agreement with what Heidi's saying, it might be more of, if I, I'll use as an example, if I do this myself, if I cut a wall or a hole in my wall and I put a door in, are you telling me I gotta come and get a permit? Because Brad knows how to run a skill saw and I just put a wall in. Or I put in a door or I put in whatever, so I don't know that, you might know that, Warren, but I don't think the general public probably knows that. I'm just saying.
I, I would agree with that, I mean, I grew up on the farm, on the country and came to town like, need a permit to change my water heater out, like, I already have one, I'm just putting a new one in, you know, it's like, I.
So I. Right, I just think it's an education thing, maybe more so than we're not doing our, we're not doing due diligence by, you know, forcing something. I think we go back and say, we need to figure out the best way to educate people and I think you'll see these numbers be more, more consistent and probably more re, you know, more accurate. I'm just, I don't.
Maybe Ben could do a story in the paper.
Yeah.
You know, let people know what they gotta have permits because that's where our nuisance is coming from too. Cause people, like Joe said, he moved in from the country, he didn't know he needed a permit, but he didn't know he could pile it, couldn't pile all his junk up in the back along with the demo car behind the garage. You know, that, that's a nuisance.
I don't have demo cars, I mean, that's, that's not me.
You know, we, we've got these properties out there that.
You're right, absolutely.
Well, so I don't have to look at it, I put it behind my shed. Well, the other three neighbors all of a sudden have to look at it, but we don't have a problem with that. So, that's where those. That's what we gotta fix. So, otherwise, is there any other questions on her report?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
We'll move on to action items. Seven A, approve ambulance department adjustments.
So this is what Tim was speaking of in the ambulance billing report, that each year the city council is mandated to adjust Medicare and Medicaid accounts. And there are some insurance accounts in there as well. This is the difference between the billing and what Medicare or Medicaid as will pay. So you always see whenever you get an insurance, you always get an adjusted amount. Uh, Medicare and Medicaid is no different. And so the amount to be adjusted for two thousand twenty-four is three hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-one cents.
Questions, concerns? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve the ambulance adjustments.
So moved.
Motion by Brad, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, sing the five, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven B, approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, authorizing purchase of rescue boat.
The fire department included in its twenty twenty-five budget, the purchase of a rescue boat that would replace the current jet ski. The city council authorized moving forward with obtaining quotes at its regular meeting on December eighteenth. Uh, after multiple requests for the purchase, we did get one formal, uh, formal quote, uh, we did have some also that decided to pass on it. Uh, the one that did submit the quote was one boat for an R-one series sixteen sixty for forty-four thousand eight forty-five eighty. This bid includes a Mercury fifth, fifty horsepower motor, the EMS lights and a trailer. And I did put some pictures on there and I'm, I've been told that I picked the right pictures for the, for the. So the action request tonight is to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, authorizing the purchase of the rescue boat.
Questions, concerns? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
So.
Second by Brad. Call the question, all those in favor, sing the five, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries three in favor, none against, two abstentions. Seven C, authorize the next steps for the Park Trail Rehab twenty twenty-five.
So in two thousand twenty-three, the city went out for bids for a trail rehab project. The project included the Wobegon Trail spur along Park Road, the gravel trail between East River Boulevard and East River Circle and the new access trail, accessibility trail from Sixth Street into Brown's Park Restroom and Shelter. The bids came in and they ranged from one hundred and twenty-two thousand to three hundred and eighty-six thousand at that time. Ultimately, the project did not move forward due to the funding being diverted to the reclamation project for Lakeview Drive. Uh, the park board budgeted for and is recommending the city proceed with the trail project in twenty-five with one addition, which is the connection from the south end of Birch Street to the Wobegon Trail. The budget for the project was set at one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The board is requesting authorization to update the plans and specs to be brought before the council for authorization to go up for bids. So what we're looking to do is approve those next steps to the Park Trail Rehab project for two thousand twenty-five. And then I did include in there the map so everybody can see where those trails are that we're looking at.
Questions, concerns? This is one of the things like she stated that we put off a year rather than do the maintenance and get these things back up to working.
How long has it been on the, I guess, on the, uh, timeline or how long has it been out for, been discussed, a couple of years or has this been out there for quite a while?
Yeah.
It's, it's been out there on the long range plan and then it came through for the council approval two years ago and that's when it got diverted. We skipped two thousand twenty-four and now it's the, the board wants to move together in twenty-five.
And now there's actually dollars in the budget to do this budget?
Yep, it's actually in the budget for this year.
Perfect, thank you.
Any questions? Otherwise, uh, do I have a motion to approve the next steps for the Park and Trail Rehab?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Only question I got is, Ben, did we?
Only question I got is, Ben, did we, we were gonna put posts in on the ends of some of that, especially this one trail out on Easter East River Trail?
That's what we discussed, yes, and I think it makes sense to do it.
The reason why I mention that is because we've had people that are actually driving their vehicle down the trail instead of to take a shortcut. And then we also have the ATVs that think these trails are for them instead of walking trails, so when we re up upgrade these here, we're gonna have to do something to keep motor vehicles off of them. So I just wanted to bring that up.
And bollards in there then?
Huh?
Those bollard posts? That's what you're thinking?
Yeah, something that they can't drive around or whatever, but we actually have vehicles driving down the one on East River Trail. Take the shortcut rather than jump on the highway, go around the corner. So I have a motion and a second. Call the question, all those in favor, signify five, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, eight A, building improvement project update.
Just kind of an update of where we are. This is a project with a lot of moving parts. Uh, the contract has been signed for the membrane roofing project for the arena and city hall, as well as the contract for the rooftop air handling unit at city hall. We did receive a proposed change order of where they see that we can make some improvements. We'll bring that up to the next council meeting for discussion. Uh, we have received one quote to date for the senior center roof and also one for the door lock. Well, actually, we have two for the door lock security system, but now one of them backed away. Uh, the library window project is out for bids and the bid opening is February twenty-fifth at eleven-thirty. Uh, you realize the AV enhancements for the council chambers are are complete. Uh, the website upgrade is underway. I will put a button on that that says, do I need a permit? And then we can educate people that way. Um, the single the city hall shingle roof portion is under contract. We did receive the quote for the arena makeup heat and air. Uh, those quotes have been requested for the arena windows, doors and locker rooms. And the square footage of city hall flooring for the PD and the city hall was sent to the state bidder who has a state bid and they'll come up and make some recommendations on what that could look like. Uh, the bonding process is moving forward. Uh, we're gonna coordinate that with the funding for the twenty twenty-five birch and pine to minimize bond issuance costs. If we don't receive money till August, which is kind of our goal here, uh that eliminates us having to do our our arbitrage, it's called. Like if you borrow the money and then make too much interest on it, then there's extra reporting you have to do, so we would rather get the money when we actually need it. So that's kind of our plan. So this is how we're laying out right now. Um, as we keep getting these under contract, uh we will be they'll be coming back to you for final approval on on some of those as well.
Okay, any questions about any of those items? Okay, then we'll move on to public improvement project update. Keith?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have much more to offer you than what's already written on your report here. Um, the project is out for bid as of this morning, late morning. It was actually uh the documents were physically available for contractors to download. Um, many have already started doing that. I'd say by like three o'clock, we already had what I would say would be probably five likely prime bidders already, just in a few hours, so. Doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna get substantially more than that, but uh for prime bidders, but you know, I still expect we'll see six, eight range total, I would guess, bit bidding ultimately getting in the project, so. We'll see where things go, but um start just answering questions, those kinds of things that will come up in the next few weeks and and uh see where the numbers come in on March sixth. Any questions for me?
Any questions, concerns?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Eight C, residential rental units licensing.
Just a little update, uh you know, we started the residential rental licensing in May of twenty-three, so we're coming up on two years pretty soon here. In twenty twenty-three, we had four hundred and forty initial license issued, followed up with ninety-two and ninety-four, so that was the the five hundred and some licenses that we have. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, so far we've renewed four hundred and thirty-one, so kind of it's a good rotation now. We do have one or two that uh one person just never did come through with their license and they are gonna put their property up for sale. Uh, we had three rental units that are unoccupied because they were posted as unfit until the landlord makes corrections, and so those are being worked on as well. Uh, license fees we collected in twenty twenty-three twenty-three thousand and seventy and in twenty twenty-four twenty-five thousand one hundred, so. It's kind of where we're at right now, just information for you on on how that process is going. I think once we got through that first hurdle of everybody getting things up to date and now the renewals are going much smoother, so.
Can you can you update me, oh, just to get me up to speed, uh you started this in twenty twenty-three? And is this for people that own apartment buildings, residents that they rent out?
Residential rental, whether you have a house that you rent out, a twin home or an apartment building. If you rent it out for somebody for residence, then you need a license.
For a in a certain period of time?
The license renews on an annual basis, but you need an uh an an inspection every other year unless there's an issue and then we go in early.
Can you tell me what's what's supposed to what is defined as a rental then?
If you rent your house out for a period of time, like thirty days or more, like a a month-to-month rental or a lease, whether it's a house, a twin home or an apartment building, we have several that are just single-family homes that people rent out and they get a rental license as well.
Something new to me, not heard of it. Oh. So that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. No, that's one of the things that we started. Um, passing the inspection is fairly easy. It's minimal standards. You know, smoke alarm, carbon monoxide detectors, handrails, egress windows, that kind of stuff. Um, talking to Kelly, there is a few things he'd like to put in and upgrade those standards a little bit. Plus, he also wants us to start to look at. He does a reach of reinspection fee, so if they don't show up or they don't whatever and he's gotta come back, he charges them extra for it because it's he's some pretty much a subcontractor to the city. But we also have the ones that stretch it out forever and ever and he'd be inspecting it six times and not getting anything and we've got it on the books that we would be fining them a hundred dollars for every time they don't and we haven't done that yet and Kelly wants us to start enforcing that, so.
Was this done by an ordinance?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, we have the city ordinance establishes the fine and I think that it we had like the first violation, second violation, third violation. So we have that in there, but the part that he's talking about is like this reinspection, like he had one today, he went over there and it was a no-show. You know, he's he made the appointment, he took the time out of his day, he went to the house, he waited for half an hour and nobody came.
But we have a residential re rental licensing ordinance or statute or something?
Yeah, it's on the front page of our website.
Okay. Thanks.
And he worked with Alexandria and Wilmer a lot.
Must have been a problem that we decided that we needed to have ordinance.
Well, yeah, there's a major problem, so. Uh, that was circly information. Um, eight D, parking on First Street.
So the reason this came up is, as you know, we don't have on-street parking until March thirty-first. And so we have been able to have the people on First Street, which would be the old mill and then that four-plex park on the old depot feeds lot, which is the PUC property, also where all the poles are stored that are going on along the Park Road or along Park Trail for the uh transmission line. So they are going to be here Monday morning, starting on that project, and so we need to get those cars moved up depot feeds lot. And we will work with the PUC and the police department will work with to get the notifications out to everybody. But my question to you is, we don't know where we're gonna have them parked, is are they on their own? Or because there's only a month left, do we just wanna lift the restriction on First Street South so they can park back at the mill? And then the landlord would be responsible for the snowing rule. And I said, before we go out and kick everybody out of the lot, we may want to see if we have that option for them.
Comments, concerns?
Is there oh, is there a way that if we lifted the restriction that they that they get specific guidelines for if there is snow to move their vehicles and where they can move them to?
You know, we could try, but.
Yeah.
There really isn't any place for them to park down there.
Yeah.
Um, we used to, for the last couple of years, they parked down by the PUC warehouse down there along that open field. Well, now that's full of wire and transformers and stuff like that and equipment for that transmission line. So we they couldn't park there, so we put them up where the depot feeds is. Well, now synergy's coming in on Monday and they need that spot open. And those cars are in the way, so.
It seems to me like there's a there's certainly a limited options uh in regards to parking. Um, I don't know, I I like to believe there are also good neighbors and that it's a month left that we could could lift it for for street, if you wanna lift it for, you know, seventy-one to whatever you wanna call it, Pine or however you wanna define the area. But I would be open to lifting that area of law parking personally.
I think for this can for this timeframe or because of this conditions, I think we could lift it for s First Street only. Because everybody, no one else around the town's got an issue.
Right, I agree.
That's the only place that it's there, but we didn't wanna get into that, well, you let them do it and then we can do it, that type of issue. Now we actually have something that's gonna cause a problem and.
Have we looked at any long-term rectifying that situation for parking since PUC does own that lot and?
PUC's got their name on it, but the city actually owns it. Because they cannot own property.
Okay.
So that got into a discussion at the PUC too because they said, we're done letting people park on our property and and I mentioned, well, you don't own it, so we can tell you who's gonna park on your property. So it is a.
For the purpose of this meeting tonight, we just wanna take care of the month of March.
Right.
I think there is a longer term issue with uh First Street South residents not having parking.
Right, I think it becomes.
Really, that's the landlord's issue, but it really becomes our issue.
Yeah, that's right.
So I'm, I don't know, if you want a motion, we can get a motion, but otherwise, I think if everyone's okay with just
General consent.
Exempting First Street only. Then.
General consensus?
General consensus would work, if that's okay.
That looks for me.
Okay. New business, crosswalk signals, Sinclair Lewis Avenue and Birch.
And some of you know that the representatives of Holy Family School, they've approached the city with a request to install flashing crosswalk signals at Birch and Sinclair Lewis Avenue. Uh, the cost of a pair of lights similar to those we have on seventy-one by Jitters is ten thousand dollars. Uh, other options we're looking at include some grant funding and timed lights that flash during certain times of the day. These are just different options we can throw around. Unfortunately, the safety routes to school has been exhausted. If the state legislate legislature funds the program in twenty twenty-five, funds would be available till twenty twenty-seven. So we're trying to look at some other options uh to see about putting crosswalks signals up there, what those might look like. I don't know. Uh, Chief Jensen's been uh in conversation with them, so and Ben as well, so we'll we'll uh work with them and try to come up with a solution that, you know, if we are involved with some grant funding or if Holy Family comes up with some funding or something to that effect, and then, of course, we would uh likely be the one responsible for purchasing and installing them.
It sure would be nice if they could come up with some fundraising. In my mind, it seems like um, there's certainly some avenues to to make it happen. There's.
Yeah.
I don't know why we.
I've been I've been working with them too a little bit on different things and bringing information back and forth and I'm down there just about every morning because I'm driving bus in that area and the number of people that could care less about the crosswalk, the the crosswalk patrol, the safety patrol, they just blow through the sides, they don't care.
It's dangerous, I know.
And so I hopefully we can somehow work with them or do whatever we can to get that taken care of. So, um, loss control workshops?
I just I put in the packet just a loss control workshop with the agendas of all the different uh types of classes that they put on. It kind of is more geared towards staff, but a lot of times council members will go because they have an interest in certain areas to get a better understanding. So if anybody wants to attend any of those classes, it's twenty bucks, includes lunch. Um, and then all the dates and locations are there on the front page to see what when it's offered. Uh, March twenty-sixth in Alexandria and April third in St. Cloud, so whichever. If you have an interest in that, you're certainly welcome and I can just you can register online or usually I have I have an account that I just log in and register people, so. Not a problem.
Just reach out to Vicki if you're interested in going to any of that. We will move on to our consent agenda. We have schedule of claims, unpaid claims of four hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventeen cents for a total of the same and January checks, paid claims slash payroll of one million, eight hundred and fourteen thousand, hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. Is, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented? Motion to approve, motion by Scott, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi, any discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify five, say an aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Informational items?
Uh, the Board of Appeal and Equalization meeting is April seventh at one. Heidi and Warren, I believe you still are are in your training window, so you are you are good to go for that, so at least one of the two of you needs to be there. Otherwise, I need a major I I need a quorum of at least three to attend that. Usually lasts about half an hour. Not a lot of people come, but it's an opportunity for people to come and address the council regarding their property tax value. Um, uh, we are the closed meeting here on February twenty-seventh, that's actually a Thursday night at five PM. Uh, we are meeting with uh the attorney under attorney-client privilege. And the fire department annual golf fundraiser at the Civic Arena on March twenty-second. Uh, the youth hockey annual beer and wine fundraiser at the Civic Arena on March twenty-ninth. The gun show at the Civic Arena on April fifth and sixth. Waterfest is May eighth, it's planned for the city of Melrose, but if the weather's bad, it's at the Civic Arena. And then Circus Pages is at the Civic Arena on June third and fourth. So as Ben said earlier, we're gearing up for some dry floor events. This is what they are, so no action requested.
Any questions on any of those items?
This is just for my own um curious mind, but regarding the open meeting rule, because we've posted this and made it public, if there's more than a few of us at any of these events, we're okay, we're not in violation.
If you do what?
If we attend them more because we've got two firemen on.
Oh, you mean like the loss or any of these events?
Yeah.
Yeah, usually what I will do on these types of events, like the the golf fundraiser and the beer and wine, you know, they're pretty popular. And then I just post that uh quorum of the council may be present.
Okay.
And you all know better than to talk city business, so.
Right.
Any other questions? Otherwise, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Brad, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Scott?
Joe.
Joe, okay, sorry. Call the question, all those in favor, signify five, say an aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against, meeting adjourned.